Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending our pre-town meeting. We're here tonight to address a warrant article that is going to be presented at a next Tuesday, January 30th, special town meeting, to address one item. And I'm going to read the warrant article for those of you who did not bring it, just for our viewing audience. We're here tonight to act on the following article. "The Sea of Town Meeting Will Vote To Appropriate A Sum Of Money From Free Cash For The Acquisition Of A 2.89 Acre Parcel Of Land Currently Owned By B K R J T Inc. Property Owner Operates Chuck Steakhouse With The Principal Place Of Business As 798 Washington Street And 10 Prospect Street, Auburn, Massachusetts In Payment Of Costs For Demolition Of The Existing Building On The Property. All Necessary Engineering Survey Title And Title Insurance Expenses, All Customary Closing Costs Generally Relating To The Purchase Of Commercial Property Or Similar Nature And Any And All Other Miscellaneous Costs Associated With The Acquisition Of The Property As Deemed Necessary And Appropriate By The Town Manager Or Act On Anything Relative There Too." We do have a presentation that we're going to make tonight, and we'll be available to answer any questions that you may have as a result of the presentation that is now going to be given by our fire chief, Chief Stephen Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, town meeting members. Thank you all for taking the time to come out tonight to hear the presentation on the proposed purchase of 10 Prospect Street, known as Chuck Steakhouse. So what we're going to do tonight is just walk through a quick little timeline on how we got here tonight, going back to 2017. I promise I'm not going to take you year by year from 2017, but I think it's important to understand the brief history again of how we got here, what led us to this point. We're going to talk about the financials, and then we're here to answer any questions that you may have relative to either the purchase or what the plan is for the future station that we're hoping to bring to town meeting in May, ultimately with a townwide ballot vote in May as well. So, everybody can see the screen? Do I need to tip it in a different way, or is everybody good? All right. So again, many of you know, a lot of familiar faces, a lot of longstanding town meeting members here. So you've heard and know that since 2017, when the Public Safety Advisory Committee was appointed by then-town manager Julie Jacobson, the goal was for a couple of things, to evaluate the existing facilities, which we're not going to talk about tonight. I know that I did email everybody, and we've been having a series of open houses. We'll have one again this Wednesday from 5:30 to 8 o'clock. So if anybody has not seen the West Street Station, or would like to see the conditions, you're more than welcome to come by. But we're not going to be talking about the need or the conditions tonight. We're strictly sticking to 10 Prospect Street. But the goal of the advisory committee was to evaluate the existing conditions, make a recommendation on whether or not to renovate, build new, build separate, build combined. So ultimately, the committee recommended a joint facility to house both police and fire on a central site. So COVID, that kind of brought us up to around COVID. We got held up for a couple of years because of COVID, and then when things kind of kicked in post-COVID, we put out two separate requests for proposals to business owners along Southbridge Street. The first one was simply Southbridge Street. We got no takers on that request for proposal for land. We went out with a second request for proposal, and we included Washington Street, just to kind of broaden the net a little bit, and we received no takers on available property on either Southbridge Street or Washington Street for the joint facility. So with that, we went to Plan B, which was focusing on a site that was already town-owned, which was the West Street location. It wasn't long before we started receiving some feedback from, you know, residents, town meeting members, that they didn't necessarily think that West Street was the best location for it. As I will reiterate tonight, I don't necessarily disagree with that. I don't think West Street is necessarily the best location either. But that's usually what Plan Bs are for, right? It's when Plan A didn't work out, and there are certainly some considerations and some constraints that come with the West Street site, many of them financial, that need to be weighed. But that's where we were. We had a preliminary design of the joint public safety facility. We posted that to our social media. We got quite a bit of comment and feedback, mostly that drove around the price tag of $78 million, a number that we were not anticipating. We anticipated that it was going to be higher than the proposed $40 million back in 2017, but we were not anticipating an increase in escalation of $38 million. So it sort of came to a surprise, you know, to a lot of us. Ultimately, that was brought to the Board of Selectmen for them to weigh in and ultimately make the decision as to whether or not we wanted to pursue a joint facility with police or fire, police and fire, or come up with another option that ultimately, which is what they decided, to pursue a fire headquarters only. So it was not a decision that was made lightly by the committee to recommend that, or for the police chief, or myself, and I do have to publicly thank Police Chief Todd Lemon for graciously stepping aside and recognizing that, you know, him or I, and we said this publicly, did not feel comfortable coming to the voters or recommending to the Board of Selectmen that we pursue the $78 million project. It was just not a number that we could wrap our head around. So the police chief acknowledged that night to the Board of Selectmen that the West Street Fire Station of the three properties was the one that was in the most need of replacement, that had the most deficiencies, and he graciously stepped aside and removed himself from the project, and ultimately, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to take that recommendation and to pursue a fire headquarters only. So, we were, shortly after that, towards the end of the summer, we started working on looking at the potential of siting, I shouldn't even say the potential, we knew the potential was there. We started making plans to construct the new headquarters on the West Street site. So at some point in the fall, right around the time of town meeting, Chuck Steakhouse put their property on the market for sale, and they put out a request for proposal for interested buyers to make an offer on the property. This was brought to our attention, myself and the town manager. We talked about it over the course of several days, about looking at the site, pros, cons, all of those kind of things. We felt that it was something that we needed to bring to the attention of the Board of Selectmen. So sometime, you know, late October, early November, the town manager and myself and other members of town administration met with the Board of Selectmen in executive session, and we discussed this possibility of putting an offer in on Chuck Steakhouse. And the long and the short is the Board of Selectmen unanimously voted to allow the town manager to enter into negotiations with the owners of Chuck Steakhouse to purchase the property. All of this, including the purchase and sales, happened in a very, very short period of time, probably within about 30 days. All of this moved very quickly, and then once we had the tentative purchase and sale, and we agreed to a price, that's when we immediately notified town meeting members and set the date for town meeting, because ultimately, this is your decision as to whether or not this is something that we want to approve. So, I want to just talk about some of the things that I'm going to talk tonight, everything that I'm going to talk tonight is fact, but I want to address some of the things that are kind of circulating around, whether it be on social media or conversations that you may have, because unfortunately, for every piece of truth that's out there, I think there's two pieces of misinformation that are out there that we need to clear up for town meeting members. So, some of the sites that are always mentioned, and when we publicly made the announcement that we had a tentative agreement with Chucks, when we made that announcement publicly, you know, there were many people that were coming up, and they were bringing up the same sites. It's always the same sites that people tend to bring up. And again, we go back to sites that were explored in 2017, and for one reason or another, were discounted as possible sites, but it doesn't mean that they don't rear their head, and it's sites that people felt like somebody was standing behind me, you know, that it's sites that people want to talk about. And I just want to briefly talk about those sites and talk about why they're not an option. So, the sites that people always like to mention is the former Yankee Drummer Site, or residents that are maybe newer to town may know it as what is often referred to as the former Lowe's property, when Lowe's purchased it and they were looking to put a store there. The area of the Water Department, the Shaws and Bed Bath &amp; Beyond property, and the Sears Automotive property. Those are always the properties that come up, and people say, "Well, why can't we put it there?" So, there's a few things that we have to remember. One, I already discussed, we put out two separate RFPs to the property owners along Southbridge Street and Washington Street, asking people that if they wanted to sell their property, to please let us know. And we had, how's that, sir? Is that better?
That's better.
Is that better, sir?
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we put out the two RFPs, and we had no takers. So that's one. Second, we've had conversations with the owners of these specific properties, and they are not interested in selling. They don't want to sell their property. And the town has been clear for many years that we are not believers in eminent domain, especially for this. I think that there are certain circumstances where a municipality may have to look at eminent domain, but I don't know that this is one of them. So eminent domain was not an option, not to mention that even if we were interested in getting a property eminent domain, that's an expensive endeavor as well, if we want to take a property. And lastly, none of these sites are going to work for what we're going to do. If we were looking and continuing to pursue a joint facility with police and fire, the Yankee Drummer Site is the only site on this list that would be a potential for a joint facility, because it's more centrally located in between the west end of town and the current fire station on Injuri Square, where it may make sense. But even with that said, that site still posed some challenges. For those who have been around and know, there's a lot of ledge there, and not to mention that they were asking more than double the price of what you're being asked to approve for the Chuck Steakhouse property. So there was still a larger expense to really any of these properties that are mentioned than we are talking about for the Chucks property. So, it's not as simple as, and you know, what I've learned over the years is that, you know, you're never going to make everybody happy when it comes to a site selection. Everybody has their ideas of where things should go and how things should be, and that's fine. But when these sites are constantly mentioned, we have to just keep in the back of our mind that these are sites that have already been vetted, the property owners have already said they're not interested in selling, so these properties are not available. So now, we have to focus on properties that are available, and at this point, it's 10 Prospect Street, or it's West Street. So, again, let's talk a little bit about what drew us to the 10 Prospect Street site. So before we even knew about the Chuck Steakhouse property, we knew, let's talk about what we did know, is that when we were looking at a joint public safety building on West Street, the plan was to demolish the entire building, site the new facility, the school department would move to the existing police station, and that's where their permanent home would be. But one of the things that was still sort of this kind of nagging thing in the back of everybody's mind is that there is added expense to doing that. So if we were to construct a new joint facility on West Street, the existing operation of the fire rescue department would have to be relocated somewhere for the close to two-year construction period. And when I presented at town meeting and talked about response times, and about how response times drives everything for us, you know, for those that follow us on social media, we just posted our end-of-year statistics. We're very fortunate in this town, within this department. We boast an average response time greater than 90% of the time, four minutes and 19 seconds, for over 5,000 emergency calls a year. Response time is everything in what we do. So that also drives the site location. And I had a town meeting member approach me after that meeting, when we talked about potentially building on West Street, and the question was specifically asked, "Well, what are you going to do during construction to make sure that there is a presence of the fire rescue department in the west end for close to two years?" And it's a valid question, and it's a real question, and it's one that we have to address as a community, whether we want to or not. In some respects, I feel like we can't have it both ways. I can't say we boast a four-minute response time, and it's important that we have a fire station here. However, during this two-year period, we're going to try to operate out of one station, which, one, we can't because of size constraints. The Auburn Street Fire Station will not, it does not fit the equipment that we have on West Street or the personnel. The building is not big enough, so that is not a possibility. So in order to remain with a presence out in West Street, we would have to do temporary facilities that would include base space that would need to be purchased by the community, and then separately, trailer space, live-in trailer space for the firefighters and the administrative operation. Now, what some of you may not know is, you know, some people think that there's just a presence at that building with firefighters and EMTs with an engine or an ambulance, there's four people assigned there. That is true. There is a lieutenant and three firefighters that operate out of that station with an engine and a paramedical-level ambulance. But the fire prevention office also is located there. We have two full-time fire inspectors, one of them being a fire protection engineer, so the engineering services are there. Their secretary for fire prevention, our EMS coordinator works out of that building, and the secretary provides administrative support to them, and the fleet maintenance division, our mechanic, also works out of the West Street Fire Station. That is where our vehicles are repaired, and the secretary provides administrative support to fleet. So in total, including the four firefighter EMTs that work there, there is a total of nine full-time people that work out of the West Street Station. So it's not just that we have to relocate and find space for the fire and EMS operation, there are other divisions and administrative things that we need to have replicate office space and those kind of things, and that comes at an expense as well. That was with the joint public safety building. Now, things change just slightly when we take the police out of the equation. Now that the police are out of the equation, that it solves the $78 million problem, it solves, in some respects, the school problem, because now that the schools can't go to the PD, we're going to eliminate the relocation cost for the school, which we hadn't even pegged a number that. We knew and had an idea of what the relocation costs were for fire rescue. We didn't even dive into what the relocation cost for schools was going to be for a period of time. But when we started pursuing fire only, that meant that the school administration portion, and if you picture the building, the school administration operates the left side of the building, the fire rescue department operates the right side of the building. We would be able to demo the right side of the building and leave the school administration portion standing, okay? But ultimately, what that does now is, when we were demolishing the entire building to place a public safety building, it's a two-acre site. Now, two acres was still small, and that was a concern of not only us, but the architects, where we were able to do it, but each building was going to, the police side and the fireside were each going to be three stories, because we didn't have the space to go out. We were going to be maximized at parking, it was going to be a tight spot at two acres. Well, now that we're only demoing the fireside and we're leaving school administration, now to place a fire headquarters, we have actually less than two acres to deal with, because now we have to position the station in a way where it may not have been the way we wanted it to begin with, but now we're bound by the school administration building staying in place. So now we have to reconfigure the site a little bit, and we're working with less than two acres now, okay? So those were all things that sort of kind of came into the equation, where no one was really thrilled about West Street, including the schools, but it was really the only thing at the time that we had to work with. And then, the Chuck Steakhouse property became known, which is why we wanted to pursue that. So, again, I think, you know, we talked about most of what's on here. So all of those, the cons, just to recap, of the West Street site was the school relocation and the relocation cost of the fire rescue department, the disruption to both operations, school and fire, during the construction period, the temporary housing costs, and the site became smaller by virtue of the school administration building staying in place. But the pro was that the town owned the land, and that we didn't have to purchase a piece of property. So, again, when 10 Prospect Street was placed on the market, and they were seeking requests for proposals, again, Board of Selectmen authorized the town manager to negotiate a deal. So let's talk a little bit about the 10 Prospect Street site. So this is a larger site than what we were looking at at West Street. The site is 2.89 acres, and I'm going to just step away from the mic for a minute, but I just want to kind of point something out, just to orient everybody, so I'm going to yell, but I'll come back and I'll recap it. So, looking at this map, this area here highlighted in orange, this is the town's GIS map. This darker red piece, that is actually Chuck Steakhouse. That's the building. And then this is the property. There is an access road that runs from Washington Street and Southbridge Street behind the building, so there is access to both Southbridge Street and Washington Street from the property. There's an entrance here, and then there's an entrance on Prospect Street. This white parcel right here, if you're familiar with it, that's a town-owned parcel, okay? That parcel that's town-owned is one acre. And to make things easy, you know, figure like divided in half. It's not exactly, but for the purpose of conversation, divided in half. Half an acre going towards the top of the screen, towards Southbridge Street, is the Veterans Park, and then the backside coming towards Route 20, that's the grassy area where, you know, eight or nine years ago, there was a skating rink there, like a small skating rink, like for the kids, that was there. So that's the grassy portion. So, one of the advantages to this particular piece of property is that it already abuts existing town land. So when you take the 2.89 acres of Chucks and you match it up to the existing town-owned land, you come up with something like this, where you see that black portion, the test fit and the plan calls for utilizing about 15,000 square feet of the land that's closer to Route 20. This does not affect the Veterans Park in any way. In fact, this actually will enhance the Veterans Park, because right now, it's a beautiful park, but there's not one parking space that's dedicated to that park, because there's no town land that surrounds it. So anybody that wants to visit that park has to sort of, in some respects, already be on foot and visit it, or they have to park on private property, which is Chuck Steakhouse, or Dunkin' Donuts, or Park and Shop, and then walk over. So there is no parking for the park on town-owned land. So the test fit that we have, and the plan would call for utilizing some of that acreage, but then recreating, and we'll show it later when I show you the test fit, but we'd be replicating some of that green space in between Dunkin' Donuts and the parking lot. So instead of the park going this way, the park would go this way, and that would allow us to create some dedicated parking spaces for Veterans Park, and then create a nice little sidewalk that goes from there that ties into the existing sidewalk into the park. So the fact that we're utilizing a portion of that land, I just want to be very clear that this does not affect the Veterans Park in any way. In some cases, it will actually enhance it by giving it some features that it does not have now. So some of the other site advantages to this is that it sits between two major highways, Route 12 and Route 20, at two controlled intersections. And it depends on who you talk to, whether or not this is considered a pro or a con, because I've had many people come up to me and say, you know, "I just, I don't think it's a good spot, because, you know, it's right by two highways at two very busy intersections." And, you know, that is true, but that does not concern us at all. This is an intersection that we navigate on a daily basis in double digits. When we leave the West Street Fire Station and come on to Route 12, whether we're crossing over Prospect Street to Washington Street, or we're just heading down Route 12, these are intersections that we're navigating anyway. We have control over these intersections with technology that's called Opticom, so our vehicles actually turn these traffic lights green in the direction of traffic that we're flowing, which makes the intersection safer for us when we're going through it. So, that is not a concern of mine. The fact that these are controlled intersections, and the way that the plan is designed is we would be entering onto Prospect Street, not onto Route 20, so the fact that we would be able to come out onto Prospect Street, make a left or a right, depending on which way we're going, and have a controlled intersection, that's the best-case scenario, you know, for us. It gets more dangerous when you're not at controlled intersections, especially ones that we don't have control over with technology. And one of the other main advantages, and we'll show it in a slide or two coming up, is that this is about as close as you can get to the center of what is known as District 2, which is West Auburn. The town, for our purposes, we break it up into two districts, District 1, District 2. District 2 is covered by the West Street Station. So again, you have to remember, the goal here is not to find a centrally-located spot, because now that we've made the decision to run a two-fire-station model, the goal is to find an appropriate site that's going to best serve West Auburn. So when you look at the map of Auburn here, and I drew a little highlighted line that shows north of that line is District 1, south of that line is District 2, and then I'm going to step away and I'm just going to point to the two squares, so you can see Those represent the existing fire station on Auburn Street to the north, and the proposed fire station at Prospect Street. As you can see, looking at District 2, it does not really get any more center of West Auburn to site a fire station to appropriately cover West Auburn. So that, to us, is a huge consideration when we're talking about location, because it's going to be an appropriate site that's going to allow us to, in some respects, not only maintain, but maybe improve our response times, you know, by this area. So again, we already talked about this, the plan, just calling to use an existing piece of property to kind of square that off. So another thing that I've heard, both on social So another thing that I've heard, both on social media and just in private conversations that I've had with citizens who have stopped me and, and wanted to engage, you know, in conversation, they'll talk about the intersection. And I've had some people say, and this was, you know, pointed out on social media, that, you know, this is not a good spot, you know, for this station. It's, it's at a very dangerous intersection. You know, it's a deadly intersection where there's a lot of fatal accidents. That was true at one time. And for residents, and there's many of you that I know and, and recognize that have lived in this town a long time, and when you think back, there was probably not an intersection in town that was more deadly than the Prospect Street and Route 20 intersection in the 90s. But a lot has changed since the 1990s. So to try to apply things that happened 30 years ago with the changes in that roadway, and we'll talk about a couple of them, they just don't, they don't apply today, and the data does not support that claim. In the 1990s, after a very serious motor vehicle accident that injured a resident, Mass DOT District Three was notified. They came into town and very quickly evaluated the road, redesigned the road, and completed construction within six months. And they made several major improvements. First, they widened the road. Prior to the redesign of that road, for those who remember, it was two lanes east, two lanes west, with no turning lanes onto Prospect Street, whether you were heading towards Prospect Hill, or whether you were heading in between, like past Park and Shop to Southbridge Street. So you were really taking your life in your hands. Let's say you were heading westbound, trying to make a left onto Prospect Street. You were kind of taking your life in your hands, just kind of hanging out there in the middle of traffic with no turning lane. And many of the accidents that we had there were rear-end accidents at the light that then subsequently pushed vehicles into the opposite lane, and then they turned into head-on collisions. So they widened the road and they created the turning lanes. The other thing that they did was they milled about four inches of road on Route 20. Picture where the driveway is on Chuck Steakhouse that comes out onto Route 20, the side driveway there. If you're traveling eastbound from West End, you're traveling eastbound, so Chucks would be on your left. As you're approaching that intersection, next time you're doing it, take a look. Right around the area of where that driveway is for Chuck Steakhouse, as you're looking off in the distance, you can see the rise in the road. It just, the grade slightly goes up. But you never lose sight of the intersection. It's close, but you don't lose sight of the intersection. Prior to them milling the road, you lost sight of the intersection. So what would happen is, as you were traveling eastbound coming up there, for a few seconds, you would lose sight of the intersection because of the height. And by the time you crested that little knoll, you were only 60 feet away from the intersection. So if something changed that you didn't see prior to losing sight, you only had 60 feet of stopping distance before something happened. So milling the road allowed you to not lose sight of the intersection as you're traveling eastbound. And then lastly, what they did was they changed the signalization and the timing of the traffic lights. Prior to the construction, when one light turned red, the other light turned green immediately. They turned simultaneously at the same time, which gave no wiggle room for something to happen or to avoid an accident. There's now a six-second delay on that traffic light when it goes from red to green. And I, you know, it's, that has made, that has made a big difference. I'm always an advocate of when the light turns green, look left or right anyway, but the change in that traffic signalization was also a dramatic improvement. So these four things that were done in the 90s significantly decreased the amount of motor vehicle accidents on that roadway. It decreased the amount of serious and fatal accidents on the roadway, where that roadway is not, it's not even on the state's top list anymore, which it was in the 90s, which is why they had that quick turnaround of design and construction. So there's been significant, again, significant improvements to that intersection. So as part of the purchase and sales agreement, the Board of Selectmen directed the town manager to seek an independent proposal, I'm sorry, an independent appraisal of the property. We did that, and the appraisal came back at $3.9 million. That was the independent appraisal. After several counteroffers back and forth between the town manager and the property owner, we settled on a price of $4,050,000. And that is what the purchase and sales agreement today sits at, awaiting your approval. I just want to talk a little bit about the relocation expenses, just so you kind of get an idea of what that may look at, because we're gonna really kind of dive into the next, you know, we're almost, we're almost done, we got a few more slides, but really what we're gonna talk about moving forward here is, is the budget and, and sort of the finance plan on what we're looking to do. But again, one of the main considerations for this project is the relocation expenses. These buildings that you're looking at here have been online for just a couple of weeks in the city of Cambridge. The city of Cambridge is constructing a brand-new fire station on the location of their existing fire headquarters, which meant that they had to seek a piece of property to relocate for the 18- to 24-month construction period. So for those who are familiar with like cargo or shipping containers, like the Conex boxes, they're called, these are sort of like Conex boxes on steroids. These are metal-built buildings that are individually built and then designed to join together for however big of a facility you need. So you can see on the left, they're craning one of those single units into place, and ultimately what they constructed was a four-bay station. Each one of those individual bays was $1 million. And this is not something that you can rent. This was purchased by the city of Cambridge. And at the end of the construction period, they have a decision to make. Do they, do they keep these buildings to utilize for the future, for either storage or relocation of other properties, or do they sell them? But either way, this was an expense that was built into the construction cost of the new fire headquarters. Now, what this doesn't take into consideration, and I had a lengthy conversation with the Cambridge Fire Chief, he was very helpful in this conversation, is what this didn't take into consideration is, with the $4 million, is although these arrive prepared for electricity and plumbing, once they're in place, you still need an electrical contractor to hook up the electricity. You need a plumber to make the connections of the plumbing. And then what they did separately was they either purchased or rented, I wasn't 100%, I, I don't know that we actually talked about whether it was a rent or a purchase, but they acquired the office space and the bunking quarters with like separate, like live-in-style trailers. They did that from another company separately. But he ballparked the relocation at somewhere close to $5 million by the time you, you purchase these containers, all of the labor that goes into place, plus either the rental or the purchase of the other facilities that you would need. He ballparked that expense, the relocation expense, at about $5 million. So just a little background on this property, and again, all of this ties into the budget and the request that you are gonna be asked to vote on next week. So as part of this purchase, the town would be required to complete what's called a Phase One environmental study, which essentially explores whether or not there is underground contamination on the property. Now, a company called Environmental Risk Advisors, back on December 24th, 2012, issued a report when they conducted a Phase One assessment on Chuck Steakhouse when they were refinancing. The bank required it. And within the contract, I just pulled a little excerpt with the quote, "In the contract, their goal was to identify and record existing potential or suspected conditions that may impose an environmental liability on the property." There was only one recommendation that came out of that report. And that recommendation was, and I quote, "Based on the former presence of a fuel oil underground storage tank and the lack of documentation regarding environmental quality at the time of the tank removal, a limited subsurface investigation is recommended to document soil and groundwater conditions in the vicinity of this former tank." Now, what I can tell you is that all of the proper permits were pulled at the time when this tank was removed from the fire department. The fire department was there and witnessed the tank removal, and we have documentation that shows that there was no signs, and we're limited in what we can do just by the naked eye, but there were no signs of any issues of tank leakage at the time. So Chuck Steakhouse took this, took this advisory and consulted with CMG Environmental Site Assessment, and they received a report in January of 2013 that concluded, and I will read it. "CMG did not find signs of soil contamination associated with a historic fuel oil underground storage tank in the study area based on visual observation, field screening with photoionization detector and certified laboratory analysis, and CMG does not recommend any further environmental assessment associated with the subject underground storage tank." So that's good news, that we know that at least 10 years ago, we had an environmental company that did a Phase One that showed that there was no contamination of that property. Now, that property has not changed hands, and it has not changed use in the past 10 years. So we have every reason to believe and feel strongly that when we conduct our Phase One, which we will be required to do in order to get financing, we are confident that our Phase One is going to show the same thing that CMG did 10 years ago. And that's, you know, again, that's an important point because it's something that I would be thinking about, you know, it's something that we all, I think, think about when we've acquired properties, is what kind of liability are we assessing? But we have every reason to believe that based on previous site work, that this is gonna be considered a site that has no fear of contamination. So I want to talk to you a little bit about the test fit before we jump into the budget numbers. And the town CFO, Karen Harnoys, is here, as well as the town manager, which you know. So if you have any specific finance questions that, that I can't answer, they are here to answer any questions that you may have. But I want to quickly just look at the test fit. And it's actually on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen tonight, where they are going to weigh in, and we're gonna be looking for their guidance in terms of what direction do they want to pursue when we're looking at how are we going to fit this site? So again, let's just work on the rough assumption that we're looking at close to three and a half acres, including the parcel that the town already owns. The test fit that you're looking at here shows a plan with fire headquarters only. It would sit just the fire headquarters. The apparatus bays would come out onto Prospect Street, almost in the center of Prospect Street. It would be a two-story station. And then behind it, and we've had some very basic preliminary conversations, but it was discussed the night that the board voted to remove the police station from the project, was in order to give the police department some breathing room, because at the end of the day, the problems that the police department face in terms of size of the building and the scope of their operation within the confines that they're in, those problems and challenges are not gonna go away. So what are we going to do to try to give them a little bit of breathing room in order for them to expand? And sort of the low-hanging fruit that's there is removing the 911 communication center from the police station and relocating it on the Prospect Street site. Now, this communication center would not be part of the fire station. So it's not like anybody that's walked into the police station, you know, today, when you walk in, the dispatchers, they're the forward-facing people that greet you at the window. That's not how this would be. The communication center would actually be behind the fire station. The general public would not go into the communication center. There's no reason really for the public to go into the 911 communication center. But they would share certain infrastructure. They would share plumbing and HVAC in order to sort of have that cost savings. But the plan right now is to just build the shell of the communication center. So we'd put the walls up, we'd put the ceiling up, there's certain HVAC systems, there's certain things that we would have to do so the building just doesn't, you know, rot away with it being sort of what we'll call a vacant space. But the plan is not to finish the communication center, because in some respects, we're not there yet. The town has not made that commitment as to whether or not they're gonna do that. And if they are gonna do that, there's some other things that need to be explored with that. But we feel that this is a good first step in, because again, the police department has their challenges, the communication center has equal challenges, right? That it is a very small room, we're now up to three dispatchers, you know, in that room. It's a tight space. So there's, there's things that need to be addressed there as well. And we think this is a good first step in terms of at least thinking ahead a little bit and building the footprint for the communication center. And then, once that's done, the Board of Selectmen will ultimately make the decision as to whether or not we're going to formally take those steps to relocate them from the police station into the new location on Prospect Street. So this is what sort of the design looks like. You can see at the top, I'm gonna just step away and point, but I'll be right back. You can see that that's the new green space that we put in from the square footage that we took from kind of that park area. We replicated some green space in between Dunkin' Donuts and the parking lot. We'll put some parking spaces dedicated there. The benches could go back there, we'll have the sidewalk there. So that green space will now tie into the Veterans Park. So this is what it looks like with the single facility on it. This test fit, and this is what the board will be discussing tonight, Matt Salad, who's our primary architect from Tekton, who's working on this project, he'll be here tonight to address the board. One of the things that we're talking about is this site is big enough that we could carve out some space and read, and kind of design the site, that someday it could fit a future police station. Now, one of the early talks, and again, there's been about 28 revisions of this, but one of the early talks was, well, we could build a fire station and set it up in a way where down the road, we could build a police station and just, and attach it to the fire station. And what the architects will tell you, and those, you know, that may be here in the construction world, what, what they'll tell you is that that is possible, and that's not a bad plan. If we were going to construct the building, and within, let's say, five years, we knew that we were going to build the police station, then we could design it in a way where the two could be attached. But if it wasn't going to be within a five-year period, the architect's recommendation is that we plan to have these as two separate buildings, because we're gonna spend unneeded money in designing a building to eventually accept an addition. We're gonna have to over-design that, that if that doesn't happen for 20 or 30 years, when it comes time to marry those two buildings together, you're now looking to put a brand-new building attached to what could potentially be a 20- to 30-year-old building. The technology in systems is not going to line up. I can't even imagine what the technology's gonna be 20 years from now in certain things like HVAC. So they warned against that and said... and said that we're going to spend money needlessly. Although it's a good thought, it will be cheaper to construct a second building when we're ready to do that. And really, at the end of the day, it's if the town decides to do that. So we're trying to balance this entire situation on planning for the future, which I'm a huge advocate of, but also trying to be realistic and understand that, you know, some of the things we're talking about may happen 20 to 30 years from now, if they happen at all. So we have to weigh all of those things when we're talking about the now. We certainly have to look towards the future. And I think with the communication center piece, we're doing that. But this is what it would look like if we were to do this down the road. Now, it doesn't change the physical location of the fire station. The fire station sits in the same spot. But what it does is it changes the fire station from a two-story building to a three-story building. And it also makes the police station a three-story building. So essentially, we are utilizing 100% if we were to design the building in this way, and this is kind of the plan that we were going to move forward with, we are utilizing 100% of the space. All of the available parking is in place. These buildings could not be expanded width-wise. The only way that they would be added to for future growth is to go up. So those are all sort of the conversations that, you know, we need to flush out, and the board needs to decide is what, you know, what direction, you know, do we want to go? Do we want to leave some room for future growth in other areas? Or do we want to plan it out one way or another? Now, at the end of the day, as far as the fire station's concerned, like I said, it doesn't change the physical footprint. The only thing it changes for fire in this plan is it goes from a two-story to a three-story building. That's it. But we think it's important that people know, and again, the board will have further direction tonight. But it is, this is a possibility. Ed, did you or Karen want to talk about the free cash?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thanks, Steve. So when we considered either borrowing for the acquisition cost of $1,050,000 and other costs associated with demolition and closing on the site, we're still trying to fine-tune that number. So for presentation purposes, we have that pegged at $4.5 million. We're expecting some information later this week that's going to help us narrow that number down. We're hoping it's going to be roughly in the $4.3 million range. What I can tell you is a decision was made to do an outright acquisition purchase by utilizing some of our free cash. And that required an amendment to our free cash policy, one-time use, that was voted by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee to draw down roughly, I'll call it $4.5 million, one-time use of free cash that would save our taxpayers money by not going out and borrowing. So as of July 1st, DOR certified our free cash for a period ending June 30th, 2023, at $21,363,298. Now, as part of our free cash policy, we're allowed to use up to 50% of the net gain. And we did use a portion of that at the Fall Town Meeting. We appropriated several warrant articles totaling $1,051,331.19. That now leaves us a balance of free cash going into this special town meeting We are, for purposes of tonight, we are requesting $4.5 million, leaving us an adjusted free cash balance, if this warrant article should pass, of $15,811,966.81. Now, if this warrant article passes, then our free cash policy would revert back to the language that was voted prior to the amendment. This is only a one-time use. And by doing that, we are saving the taxpayers by not borrowing $4.5 million, roughly a little over a million, $1,4,400 in interest cost over a period of 10 years. So we think that's the fiscally prudent thing to do, to use a portion of our reserves that we have saved up. And we believe, based upon a discussion with our financial advisors, in no way that's going to adversely affect our bond rating. I think the bond rating agencies would see this as a fiscally responsible thing to do. And we're saving the taxpayers over $1 million over a 10-year period of time. In addition to that, we have to separate out the two. I think Steve identified the costs associated by not purchasing those Conex units to store or to provide a place of operations during the period of construction. So he estimated that at $5 million. So certainly, by looking at this site rather than the West Street site, we'd also be saving the taxpayers $5 million of purchase price cost, but also another $1 million of interest as a result of not borrowing that money. So total savings would be about $7 million by doing a one-time acquisition purchase out of free cash.
Now, this is the last slide before we jump into questions. But I think it's important because this has been a question that has been asked of me as well, is they say, well, what happens if we purchase the land, but then ultimately, the vote for a fire station fails? Well, what do we do then? And what we've been asking people to do is separate the two, right? Regardless of how you feel about a new fire station and whether or not you think that that is needed, this is a good investment for the town. The town does not own any land that is capable of doing any sort of a project. And we proved that since 2017, as we've been on the hunt for land. Kevin Kennedy, who is the chairman of your Finance Committee, he also served as the chairman of the Facility Advisory Use Committee. And he said publicly a few weeks ago, when the Finance Committee took a unanimous position to support amending the free cash policy, Mr. Kennedy that night said that the biggest challenge of this project since the beginning has been trying to find a suitable location to site the building. So the town is land poor. We do not own any land. So again, separate the two. This is a good investment for the town. Now, we're hoping that Town Meeting votes to purchase this property with the plan to site a new fire station. But if for some reason that fails, it's not going to be the only attempt to do that because this is a needed project, and the need is not going to go away over time. But let's just hypothetically fast-forward five years, six years from now, and we're still trying to obtain a fire station to sit on that site. And Boards of Selectmen in the future, Town Manager, Fire Chief, at that time, say, you know what? We're going to throw in the towel, and this isn't happening. The voters have clearly spoken. It's not going to happen. We're going to sell the Prospect Street land. You will sell that property for more than the $4,050,000 that you're purchasing it for. So this is an investment. It should be viewed that way, just like any property that is purchased. So that's how we're asking people to look at it. We're purchasing this, or we're hoping to purchase this with the hope that a future fire headquarters will go there. But if that does not happen, the town could choose to either use it for another municipal use or sell it, and we will get our money back. So with that, I can certainly go back to any slide that someone may have a question on. But we'll open it up to any questions that people may have, and we will do our best to answer those. And if for some reason, I find it unlikely, but if we do not have an answer for it, we will get that answer for you and report back to you before next week. I do also want to remind everybody about the tour at West Street on Wednesday night from 5:30 to 8:00. If you have not had an opportunity to tour the building, we'd love for you to come by and take a look. So at this point, we'll open it up to any questions that Town Meeting members may have. Yes, sir.
The budget cuts that the governor has put in, is that going to affect the viability for the fire station?
So it's not going to affect anything for the fire station because as it sits right now, the state has no grant funding, and there is no grant funding in place for police stations, fire stations, or public safety facilities. So that's a question that we're often asked as we've tackled this project, is, you know, is there grant funding available? And the answer today is no. I have had the opportunity to testify before the State Senate on three separate occasions, asking them to consider approving a bill that would create a public safety building authority, very similar to the building authority program that they have with the schools, which is how we built our new high school and middle school with the help of two separate MSBA grants. Like I said, that bill is before the legislature right now. How these new cuts will affect the future of that bill is yet to be seen. But as it stands right now, the town was not relying on, nor does the state have any existing program that would be cut by way of the cuts that the governor has made.
Can you pull that map? So the access road from Southbridge Street to 20, is that going to be gated off? Or is anybody going to be able to drive through through the area and gain access onto?
Yeah, that's a good question, Mr. Phant. And, you know, to be honest with you, I think the answer right now is we don't know. We're going to have to, I think we're going to have to examine the pros and cons of that. I can tell you that the way that the existing road is established now, it's built to more of a driveway standard. You know, if the Planning Board was to look at it, they would say that it's constructed more of like a driveway standard. During construction, the road would actually be brought up to a road standard. So the potential exists that it could be a road that is cut through. But we would have to investigate, along with the architects, to make a determination as to whether or not the road is a throughway. There may be an opportunity to turn in off of there, and then it forces you into the parking lot versus a cut-through to Southbridge Street in both ways. We do, however, we know that as part of our plan, we want to utilize that roadway for public safety access so we can utilize it as an entrance and an exit. But whether or not that would be open to the public, that has yet to be determined. I think that there's, I think there's probably pros and cons to both. But that's something that's going to need to be discussed with the help of the Planning Board as well.
The second part, and I love your idea about adding another A-Com center to the city. Because in the future, with regional dispatch centers and state 911 grants, you have it made.
Yeah, that's a great point, Mr. Phant. And I'll talk briefly about it right now because it hasn't been vetted or explored with the board. But that's the thought process of why we're leaving the space unfinished. Is, and again, this is sort of what I alluded to when I said that there's a bigger decision that needs to be made by the Board of Selectmen if they choose to move the communication center from the police department over here. Is, you know, I think the police chief and I, we feel the same way. We agree on this topic. That if that move was to be made, that is the time that the town should consider regional dispatch. The police chief and I also feel strongly that we have zero interest in joining a regional dispatch center unless we are the hosting community. So if that is going to be the case, and ultimately, the Board of Selectmen would be the ultimate decision-maker on that. But that's exactly the plan, Mr. Phant, is that there is currently money available, and the state encourages municipalities to go regional. And in an attempt to go regional, there are significant grant monies available that would outfit and essentially construct the communication center. So the thought is to build the footprint. We'll put the walls up. We'll put the ceiling up. We'll put the infrastructure in. And then if ultimately, the town decides that they want to move towards a regional dispatch center, we would apply for a grant. And those grant funds would complete the construction of the communication center and the build-out of the equipment. So that is the thought. We're not there yet. But just to sort of tie it in, that is another example of the future planning that we're thinking about here. Mrs. Goodrich.
Great presentation. Obviously, always helpful for this. My apologies for not getting these questions to an extent, but they literally want us to came in by attack. But I'd rather ask you these questions tonight and have solid answers.
Absolutely.
And tell me we can have that excuse to hold the site, which we do not want. So I'll ask you, there are four questions. Two from our lady, Amy Barbie, has a statement for the future police station, which is up there. There is a local discussion about that. Two of them are because it's in a zone 2 aquifer. What are any hazardous materials would be stored? Keep in mind that it's a zone 2 aquifer. The second question associated with that is, do you know what costs will be associated with the redevelopment of the groundwater management system? Which may be a question for Adam. So I'm going to ask him, and then you can take them.
Let me take those two first. And let me, I'm just going to rephrase the question just for the people in the audience and at home. So the first question was relative to being a zone 2 aquifer, what are the potential hazardous materials that will be stored on-site? The answer is none. None of what we possess outside of what you're able to possess in your home in terms of motor oil or things like that. We do not store any of those things in the quantity that would be outside of the zone 2. And keep in mind that, and I'll use Jiffy Lube as an example, which is at the end, you know, just almost across the street from the site. They are operating in the zone 2 aquifer, and they have 10 to 20 times what we would be storing on-site, you know, in terms of just general motor oil and things like that. But outside of those sort of normal things, there's nothing that we store in either of the fire stations that would be considered outside the scope of hazardous materials. The second question was the groundwater management. And the town planner is here, and he can correct me if I'm going way off base. But I believe what you're asking is like groundwater recharge and things, as far as like? Yeah. Yeah, I, you know, just.
Stop correcting me. The other two engineers are in the market right now. That piece that up with the water on site.
Because we expect there to be significant costs to do that analysis. And if so, just, you know, just because this is a question that was raised by someone who wants to answer, you know, that as a Town Meeting member, just the groundwater management system may come up that next week.
Yeah, our architect, Matt, is here tonight. I can talk to him about that tonight. I certainly. I certainly don't have a, a potential price as to what that may be. Alls I can say is, and the planner can correct me if I'm wrong. Those are all things that are taken into consideration when the property is designed. Groundwater discharge, how it's discharged, amount of green space, all of those things. Those are all taken into consideration as, as the overall property is designed. Those are all built into the construction cost. And those are also things, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but those are all things that the planning board looks for. So the planning board would, would ultimately say yes or no as to whether or not that, that meets it. I can try to get a rough idea of what groundwater discharge projects are on, on certain projects. I don't have that tonight. But I, I can tell you that those are things that are all designed as part of overall site construction. Absolutely.
So, um, so I'll ask a question and then share a conversation. So what are the costs, what will the cost be to operate the intersection to manage emergency vehicle traffic? And I know you already addressed the partials. So the conversation with the public people was, you know, Prospect Street, you know, cars in queue. We understand that you can stop traffic. And I don't know the answer to this. So, so does, does the fire truck or ambulance have to be in line with the traffic light to change it? Or can you change it from that side? Because the concern is the traffic in queue that happens on Prospect Street. You've got the one lane, could have been changed into two lanes. Um, you, you've got traffic coming from Route 20 East that make the turn onto Prospect Street and then try to get into the police, well, well, trucks now that block traffic. So, so there's, um, again, I think legitimate questions about the traffic and how you handle it. And, and just so people have a better understanding about how, whatever that system is that you said operates to, to signalize. Cause I've sat at red lights for a long time when there's, first a fire truck comes, you know, to, to turn green and the ambulance comes, which I agree with, they shouldn't have that access. But, um, the question is, can you access that light from the site?
Yeah, that's a great question. Before I answer that, I just want to point to the screen here because you'll see there's a difference between the police slide where it shows that there is access to Route 20, which is essentially where is the existing Chucks entrance and exit is. Versus if you look at the plan for the fire station only, that's closed up. The plan on both, it, it just didn't get closed on the other one. The plan is to close that Route 20 access altogether. So we avoid cars trying to turn into the parking lot. We want to force everybody onto Prospect Street. Or again, we don't know what we're going to do with that, that access road. But the plan is to try to force people onto Prospect Street to turn into the fire station relative to the, to the traffic concern. So I know that traffic is a, is a concern for everybody in terms of access and all of those things. We view traffic a little differently than probably the normal motoring public views traffic. For us, a safer traffic situation is when everybody is queued up at a red light and everybody stopped and we have the ability to go around them with no moving vehicles. That's actually best case scenario from us. We'll get, we'll get around you, you know, we'll, we'll figure out a way to get around you. So, and you know, there's really no better example of that right now than Auburn Street. You know, all you gotta do is look at Auburn Street right now. We have traffic queued up in front of the fire station on a daily basis, sometimes back to Central Square. So, and we navigate the Drury Square Fire Station on a daily basis with traffic stopped, queued up on Auburn Street. Again, we'll, we'll get around you. That's a safe situation for us. Currently at the West Street Fire Station, if you're standing on the apparatus floor looking straight across the street at the residential homes, you'll see a pole, there's a little pole there that's not blatantly obvious. But on that pole is, is a traffic emitter. So when the doors to the fire station open up and the emergency lights turn on, that is signalization from the trucks to that emitter on that pole that starts to queue the traffic at West Street for that light to turn green. So typically before we're even out of the fire station or turning onto West Street, that traffic is already moving to clear the intersection of West Street because the light is green. We would envision a very similar thing at this location. There would be a pole across the street somewhere that when the bay doors opened, it would trigger the same signalization to turn the lights green, both on Southbridge Street and Washington Street, to start to queue the traffic up, moving in the direction of travel that we're going to be moving towards. We don't envision a widening of Prospect Street, but I'm not going to rule that out because I'm not an engineer. I don't know what the architects are going to do. I don't know what the planning board is going to look at and require. It, it's a possibility, very similar to when the middle school was constructed. I, I certainly don't envision it being the same way in terms of them creating a turning lane. Those were done for different reasons for school buses and those things. But I, I'm not going to rule that out, but I'm not sure that it's completely necessary. But again, we, we have very little concerns of, of traffic when it comes to these intersections. Like I said, we have the technology to be able to queue the signals, to be able to, to turn the lights green in our direction of travel. But even so, we're able to navigate, we have lights, we have sirens. We're able to navigate, and in some cases it's easier to navigate around traffic that's still versus traffic that's moving becomes a little more unpredictable at that point. But again, you know, people need to understand and just recognize that we navigate intersections in this community on a daily basis. So the, the traffic, and I understand the traffic concerns. I'm not downplaying that in any way, shape or form. We just view it a little differently. These are intersections that we're navigating in, in emergency response mode on a daily basis every day. But the technology exists to, to help with the problem and we envision a very similar system on West Street on the Prospect Street location. That it? Absolutely.
I will find this question, but before I ask that question, because I'll wrap it up with this. First of all, I want to thank you for putting on this awesome information. I know, you know, that this has been years in the making and a lot of hard work that has gone into this to find a site. There's just, as you pointed out, there just isn't a site. And, you know, I always, I've always said you can't cover it by social media, but that's where the arguments happen, that's where the misinformation goes out. So, so thank you for addressing those issues. And if I have any more questions before town meeting, come to me as a town meeting member. Certainly try to get them to you in ideas. But the last question is, um, will using free cash affect our bond rating if there might be wealth to borrow to put a building on?
No, that was my concern. That's a great question, Mrs. Goodrich. That was a concern we had initially and that was dismissed very quickly after a conversation I had with our financial advisor. So in no way is this going to hamper our, our bond rating ability. Certainly we want to maintain our credit rating so we can get the lowest interest rate we can when it does come time, not only to borrow for fire headquarters, but for any borrowing purpose.
Just to follow up on that, Ms. Goodrich, and the town manager did say this once tonight, but I want to reiterate the point. In fact, the financial advisor actually said that not only will it not affect the bond rating, but utilizing free cash and not borrowing, they view as a more fiscally prudent way to do it. And they would actually prefer to see that. They believe that that's more fiscally responsible than to go out and borrow. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Much appreciated. I have two questions. You've answered one. My question's going to be about the traffic. I live here in the 90s, so I'm not privy to that information. But I watch you guys navigate Drury Square every single day. I can imagine that this is more than what's happening in Drury Square every single day. So thank you for addressing that. An opinion question. Moving the building to this location as opposed to the rest, rest street, is in your opinion that the impact on the kids at middle school would be drastically reduced by not having a construction done two years in front of ours? As opposed to over here, as we know, that's where our.
Yeah, I, you know, personally, I think an argument could be made for that. You know, listen, at the end of the day, is it impossible? We did it with the high school, you know, they constructed the new high school while the existing high school was in place and that was in closer proximity than a fire station would be to the middle school. Was it the best way to do it? You know, an argument I think could be made either way. But I think, you know, for the purposes of answering your question, do I think the lack of construction on the West Street site would be beneficial to not only the students, but the administration there? Yeah, I, I think that, I mean, I wouldn't want to put up with it for, you know, for 18 months. I think at the end of the day, if we're forced to do that, it's a short-term problem, but I think if it can be avoided, it, that's a good thing. I just think overall, as, as your fire chief, I think that the Prospect Street site is a superior site to West Street. It gives us a larger area of land. It gives us more flexibility for the future. It gives us, you know, kind of puts us more in the center. It's just overall, it's a better site. So I prefer Prospect Street over West Street. If we were forced to do West Street, as you heard tonight in the presentations, there's a lot more things that we're going to need to overcome to your point, not only operationally, but financially. And for those reasons, I, that's why I think the Prospect Street site is a superior site. Yes, sir.
I hope the town approves this. And if they do, how long is it going to take to finalize the sale? Would the town of Auburn owns this land and then we can move forward?
You're talking about Prospect Street site specifically? So yeah, great question, little bit of a timeline. So we have an anticipated closing date, Mr. Manager, sometime in March. We don't have a specific date, but it would be March, beginning of April.
I think April 10th.
April 10th would be the closing. So again, remember that the, the money that we're asking town meeting to approve, and we do anticipate that it will be less than the 4.5 million that we'll probably bring. If that number is fine tuned between now and next Tuesday, we'll fine tune the number. But if we don't have that fine tuned after speaking with Ty and Bond, the, most likely the request is going to be 4.5. But we anticipate that it will be, we're hoping it's more around the 4.3. That includes the land acquisition. It includes the demolition of the building and it includes the phase one environmental study. Our plan is when we close, immediately after we close, we will need to do an RFP and go out to bid to seek a contractor to demo it. There's certain timelines that that has to happen following the RFP process. But our plan is to have a contractor hired and that building leveled and that site cleaned by summertime. We do not want to maintain a vacant property on that site. So we will be moving expeditiously to demolish and kind of clean that site up and make it safe as soon as we can. Mr. Frost.
Could that closing date be moved to go after reelection? When you have the vote, the town's going to vote on the fire station?
So the, the townspeople will not be voting?
Well, you say you buy the land and it's something like there's going to be an election in May.
Yep.
So that's a way that our people's approval to finance and fund the fire station.
Yeah, I, I, I think it goes, I, I understand your point. I think it goes to what I said earlier where I think we need to look at this as two separate things. This is an investment that the town's going to make in hopes that, that a project is, is done. But it doesn't fix the problem that if for some reason the town voters do not approve the fire station in May, it still puts us in a situation where we don't have land and now we're looking at West Street. So I, I think really what the decision needs to, you know, what, what the town meeting members need to, to decide is whether or not they believe that Prospect Street is a superior site to West Street and the advantages to purchasing that. Regardless of, and I, this is what I said earlier, regardless of how people feel about the fire station, I, you know, and I don't want to speak for town administration, but I believe the manager agrees with me. This is something that the town should be pursuing regardless because we, we do not own property. And this is a better solution for a future fire station than, because if, if we were to push the, the, the closing off until the voters decide on the fire station, we'll lose the property. We're, we're not going to have the ability to purchase the property whether the voters vote for a fire station or not. So by pushing the closing off or not approving the, you know, because town meeting is going to have to vote yes or no. The closing date, I guess in some respects, doesn't really matter. But if the closing gate was to be pushed off, we're going to lose the opportunity to purchase the property.
Another question.
Yep.
What is the estimated cost of the, the, the strike that you're going to?
So we, we do not know and it's not a number that we want to prematurely throw out there. Because whatever I say tonight is going to be the number that people are going to run with. We had some preliminary conversations with the architect today. That's going to depend on some decisions that the board makes tonight. We are, once that decision is made, hopefully tonight, with the direction from the board, the architect is going to be able to move forward with the preliminary design. Once the preliminary design is done, they will send that off to the third-party estimator. So there's an independent estimator that will look at the project and they will give us an estimate, a professional estimate on what they believe that the construction costs will be. That is when we will release a number. Because anything that I tell you tonight is pure speculation and is subject to change and it's just not responsible to put a number out tonight. I, I can tell you this, Mr. Frost. I thought the town manager had the sharpest pencil in the West. I've become the guy who has the sharpest pencil in the West on this project. We understand it is not lost on anyone that, that is in this room, including me. I understand that keeping the pencil sharp and not asking for things that are unnecessary is not how I operate anyway. And anybody who knows that, or knows me, knows that that's not how I operate. We will be bringing a project to the voters that we feel is responsible, is fiscally responsible, it's what we need. It will have certainly some room for future growth, which is something that many of the citizens complain about now when we look at past projects. All of those things are taken into consideration. The last thing that I want to do as your fire chief is bring a project to the voters that I do not think has a chance of passing. That is the last thing that I want to do. That's, there's no benefit for anybody in that. So the price of this project is all on our minds. We, you know, I hope the public understands that there are certain things that are outside of our control. There's certain things that when I look at this property, you know, or I look at this project, I'm, I'm not happy with either. I'm not happy of the price of escalation and where this has gone over the last six years. It's, it's crazy to me. But there's some things that are outside of our control. But I, I can assure you and I promise you that the project that is presented has been, has been and will be fully vetted. And it will not be an, an irresponsible project, uh, both operationally or fiscally. That, that is, that is my word to the community. Understanding that we get it and, and we hear the citizens and we know that that's the, the number one question is what is this going to cost? And not, not to beat the dead horse, but to throw out a number tonight, I think would be irresponsible. But as soon as we know that number, we will share that number. It's not a number we're afraid of, it's just a number that at this point we don't know. But everything will be done to keep this project as low as we can. But, but coming out with a project that's going to serve this community for many, many years to come. Are there any other questions from town meeting members? Well, again, I just want to thank you for taking the time. We, we really do appreciate everybody taking the time to come out. We hope to see you next Tuesday. There is a Board of Selectmen's meeting kicking off in a couple of minutes here. So I'd be remiss and they'd probably say something like, welcome you to stay. They don't get a lot of visitors, so I would welcome you to, to stay for the board meeting. Like I said, they will be addressing this test fit issue tonight. But otherwise, if nobody has any questions, drive safe, have a great night and we will see you next week. Thank you.